Do you use this AI notes off of this?
I have no idea how that got on there. I don't know what it is. I mean, it's the same thing we use for biomass, but I don't know why it's on ours.
It's self-aware and it does what it wants.
Yeah.
It hurts someone to talk about it.
I'm gonna decline it.
Yeah, that's right. And I don't even know where it goes. Hope Mr. Medley's not in our.
Everybody wants to read.
I get wants to read that. I used to notice when we had these meetings and you're on a calendar invite forum and then new AI, then you get emails.
We are very helpful there. I I'm just limited on what I do end up saying. Is there about sandboxing and still pause on them? They want to do it belly dumps. Um, maybe a little bit better to to be able to do that, but.
Yeah, maybe you and Craig.
For belly dumps. Um, it's not saying that I don't know how much environment there was a little tight and it used to.
Good morning, everyone. It is November fifth, twenty twenty five at nine thirty one AM. Harney County Court is in session. Everyone, please stand and join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, I want to thank Clerk Robinson for getting us a new American flag. And I think he said he has a roaring flag.
Thank you for getting the flag.
The other one was looking a little.
This looks a lot cleaner.
All right, vouchers, we've taken care of late items. Any late items for the agenda?
Could we add to the end of new business? The vacation leave cash out, just so we can have a quick conversation. And if it's something to take action on, we can do it. Before we get into that last pay period.
Uh, okay. Anything else?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, and opposed. And hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is minutes. We have October fifteenth, regular session minutes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve October fifteenth, regular, Harney County Court, regular session minutes. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, and opposed. And hearing none, motion carries. And October fifteenth, work session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve October fifteenth, Harney County Court, work session minutes. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, and opposed. And hearing none, motion carries. Uh, moving right along, opportunity for public comment. So anyone that would like address, like to address the court? Don't see anybody online, nobody in the room. We'll move on. First topic then, um, for. Are you, are you Tammy? Are you there? I think you need to mute. She can hear me. Um, first topic then, under updates is wildlife services predator control from Mr. Foster and Mr. Kemper. Sir, gentlemen, thank you for being here today.
Well, we, we had started having conversations earlier this year because after we expended all of our Taylor grazing fund money, we don't have the funds we've generally used to fund the wildlife services program, which is important to the county. And so I thought before we get to June and the end of our fiscal year, we could start having some conversations and figure out what the importance of that program means for our community in different ways that we may be able to fund it. And we had had some discussions, maybe at the N RAC or Mr. Foster and I had had some conversations about, and Mr. Kemper, I believe, about different ways that we may be able to structure it, the pros and cons of that. And I think it's also important for the court and the community to understand what services are provided. So we invited you guys to take it away.
Yeah, so I can go first. Hello, everybody. Lee Foster, District Wildlife Biologist with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um. Commissioner Frank and I have had a number of discussions about this topic, and he invited me to come talk a little bit about the benefits we get from having wildlife services agent in the county. Um, and so uh, wildlife services does more than just predator control. Um, they're really our, our, um, go-to source for addressing a lot of different kinds of wildlife damage. Um. The thing with wildlife laws at the state level and the federal level is it's a major patchwork. Um, one thing you can do with one species, you can't do with another species. Um. And some of those are state laws, some of those are federal laws with migrant bird treaty act. Um, so it becomes really complicated how you can address problems depending on whether you're having an issue with a beaver or a raven or a cougar. Um, and the the benefit of wildlife services is they, they have a broad mandate to, um, address all those different species. They have a lot of latitude to kind of cut through the, the complicated nature of things. Um. So, you know, they're the only people who can address ravens on power lines, for instance, um, lethally. If, if we have ravens on power lines and we don't have a wildlife services agent, um, I can't put out poisoned eggs and deal with those ravens. I can't remove an active raven nest legally because that's a federal regulation. Um. Things like, um, if somebody loses a lamb to a cougar, um, it is much, much easier for us to, uh, address that cougar, lethally remove that cougar, um, if we have a wildlife services agent in place, um, because our other, uh, programs where we can run large carnivores with dogs are complicated volunteer gigs, and it is harder to, harder to pass the background check to become one of those volunteers um, than it is to pass the background check to get my job, um, under state law. So wildlife services does provides a lot of service, um, wildlife services provides a lot of services for the county by, you know, uh, simplifying all of this pretty complicated, um, wildlife law landscape. Um. Adam does other things in town too, um, in the county as well beyond just, uh, poisoning ravens and catching coyotes and running bears and cougars. Um. In a lot of parts of the state, we have, um, private companies called wildlife control operators that can deal with a raccoon under somebody's house, catch a fox eating somebody's backyard chickens. We don't have any wildlife control operators in Harney County, so in the absence of having a position like this, those calls come to me. And unfortunately, our staffing capacity at my office is low enough where sometimes we can help folks out, sometimes we can't. Sometimes I'm going to be in a helicopter for the next two weeks and that raccoon eating chickens or living under somebody's house is, uh, is the responsibility, the, the property owner, which, uh, is challenging. It's, it's really, really helpful to have somebody whose job it is to address problem wildlife in the county.
One of a few questions?
Sure.
So, um, amongst this patchwork of complicated stuff, how much local decision-making and control do you have for Harney County or this Adam cap? Or, I mean, is it a patchwork that gets hung up before it ever gets down and know the policy is this? Sorry, you can't do what, what we'd like to be done here?
Really, um, I have a lot of control. Um, but so does wildlife services. Um, so if, if we didn't have a wildlife services agent, um, in the county and we had a beaver issue under the new beaver laws that have been passed over the last few legislative sessions, um, that's another really complicated new, uh, set of legal constructs that we're dealing with right now. Um. In the absence of wildlife services or wildlife control operator, um, I get the call. I have to assess the type of landowner, the type of damage, and then issue a kill permit, which is so a number of steps. Whereas wildlife services is authorized to, they're trained on those legal constructs as well. They're authorized to make that decision and take care of the problem. And then typically I care about it after the fact. Um, and so it, it, uh, removes a level of oversight, really. It, well, I won't put it that way. It removes a level of paperwork that makes, uh, it makes us be more responsive to issues people are having.
And a wildlife control operator, you know, how, without getting too specific, how is this entity credentialed and what is their chain of command, if they have any?
Um, so they, uh, they're private businesses, um, and they are licensed by us, so they need to go through, pass a licensing exam, I believe, understand the laws that they're operating under. Um, and it gives them authority to deal with, um, serpent species once again. Things like raccoons and foxes, um, and some various other things where we don't need to potentially issue a kill permit. Um. What they can't, and they're typically working in an urban setting. They're catching possums under people's houses in Springfield. Um, they're maybe working with folks to deal with turkey damage in places where we have urban turkey damage, which unfortunately we're on our way there. Um.
Are there any in the eastern, uh, counties, uh, wildlife control?
Uh, there are some in central Oregon. I don't know if there are any in Malheur County. Um, there might be a couple in northeast Oregon. Typically larger urban population centers. I would doubt somebody can make a business pay here. We just, you know, we have a low enough population base where we're not getting a call about a raccoon under somebody's house every day. Um.
My last question, it might be something Adam was going to cover, uh, which species are the most high, high priority and most voluminous that you have to respond to here in Harney County, public control?
Um, it's seasonal, but like right now it's coyotes. It should have been remarkable for bad birds for certain reason. And the summer beaver, a lot of beaver work, which is seems any, anytime irrigation system, season, beaver become a nuisance, not as now. But yeah, I'd say probably coyotes. Springtime is ravens, water nesting. Uh, we had what three cougar calls and one in March in September, one in town. Got a, I saw Zadell Ward Ranch, got a cougar that was a cattle. Got the call for the one in town, and then we had one the same week in Roosie trying to kill some of his dog. So.
Thank you.
They come and go.
One thing I think is important to highlight when it comes to how wildlife services handles beavers is there have been a lot of conversations lately about the implications of beavers on upland recharge and also for slight flood mitigation controls. And so I believe that our wildlife services relocates beavers when they can, when it's possible, so that they're not interfering with private landowners. And because we're putting so many resources towards figuring out how to improve our aqua for recharge and to mitigate floods, I think it's important to have those services to put the beavers where they belong. We also have Bruce Rickman here. He is an N RAC member and years ago, when we ran into the conundrum of how to refund this program, I think he was instrumental in figuring out some partners that could add some funding. So maybe you have something to add about that, or with your extensive electrical utility background, maybe you could speak a little bit to the implications of, or wildlife services and how that affects everyone that's paying for power.
Well, it was, um, just from the power industry. It was, uh, whenever we finally started using wildlife services, it was, it was a huge difference on getting rid of the key birds. And it took us, I mean, they got rid of the wildlife services and it took us what, a year and a half, two years to get it back, back to the lakes. There was a gap there where there, it made a big difference. And the savings to the consumer and to the power, of course, you save power, you save consumer. So. And, um, I do know that if you lose it, it's hard to redeem, it's hard to get it back. As far as, I mean, we went through all kinds of options on trying to fund it. And this seemed to be the, making the most sense this year.
Yeah. Was it in the wall?
Yeah, we also partnered with some wildlife conservation groups. And this morning I emailed Ducks Unlimited because of the beaver work they do. And the, the predatory birds, raccoons and skunks, which prey on bird eggs. I reached out to them to see if this might align with their mission and they'd be willing to partner. But I think in the past they partnered with some of those.
Whenever we, we did have a lot of support, whenever, and whenever we were trying to get this, but it was whenever COVID did. And so everybody was just ground to minimal help. And as far as funding, because everybody, nobody was working, there was no fundraising going on for any of those conservation groups that, that do money retention. But there was, there would have been, and you could have done a few things. And once it got reestablished here, kind of quit, but maybe we have to.
Approach them again.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I, there is some options out there. I need to go. There, there are. I mean, you got the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, you got the Wheel Bear Foundation, you got, as they use it in their business forever, whatever. There's all kinds of those agencies. There are groups that will go with the agents. Sportsmen's Alliance, I've talked with them several different times. So they don't really, well, they do have.
If we were to explore other structures for maintaining wildlife services, but not through AFIS, what, would we lose any services to the community without being under that federal umbrella?
Yeah, it, uh, at that point, it becomes pretty complicated. There have been some other counties that have tried that when they've run into similar funding, um, difficulties bringing, uh, taking the position out of AFIS and making it a county position. Um. Yeah. Like Adam said, the work is seasonal, so some seasons of the year you probably wouldn't see a big impact. Um, however, the big change would be, um, to management of migratory birds, so ravens, racers, anything that hits on a power line. Um. Migratory Bird Treaty Act, uh, which is a federal law, actually a treaty between the US, Canada and Mexico, um, governs management of any migratory bird and is very restrictive, um, as to what you can do to take advantage of species. And so really not having an AFIS, uh, employee would mean no lethal control or injuries controlled migratory birds, which we're pretty much talking specifically about ravens here. Um, they're the big one. So that would be challenging. Um. Coyotes, uh, a non-AFIS employee could pretty much do what Adam does. Um. They would receive less support. Um, I know, uh, AFIS flies a plane, shoots coyotes from the air. You probably wouldn't see those sorts of services anymore. It'd be limited to, to what, uh, what the position could do by themselves and probably wouldn't include aircraft operations. Um. Bear and cougar stuff is pretty complicated. Um, the laws about that are fairly complicated. Um. And essentially, as far as I can tell, a, uh, county employee would probably be limited to acting as the agent of a landowner. So they could, let's say a cat killed a, killed a sheep. They could run that cat on that landowner's private land. Once the cat got onto federal land, they would have to, and stop at boundary. Um. Is my understanding, although that law is a little, still a little murky to me. Um. Wolves are a big thing. Um. Currently, uh, wildlife services staff can conduct depredation investigations once they've received training. Um. They can, and werewolves are still on the endangered species list. They can do what we call injurious harassment. So that's like pepperball guns, beanbag guns, things like that, running that wolf with a drone miles away from the cows it's been harassing. Um. A lot of those functions would go away. A county employee couldn't conduct, assist with conducting depredation investigations. They wouldn't be able to use that injurious harassment. And additionally, we had, we had a, a about two weeks long problem with a depredating wolf outside of Riley this spring. Um. We got a lot of help, both from Adam, but from other wildlife services staff across the state. We had their guy from central Oregon come out and spend a couple nights doing, watching those cows all night. We had folks come down from La Grande and assist. Um. It's unclear to me how much help we could expect locally from AFIS if we didn't have an agent locally. Um, I think that would be a much harder ask for me to make if I'm calling wildlife services and saying, hey, I'm in Harney County. I know you guys don't have any presence down here, but please, I need five people for two weeks. Um. You know, that's, that's a, a bit of an open question, how much help they'd be willing to provide. Um. Those are the big things that are different. Um, beavers, uh, a county employee could probably function. They probably need to take the wildlife control operator's licensing, and I don't exactly know how that, those programs would match with the government entity. Um. But probably not a big deal there. Um, it's really migratory birds, bears and cougars and wolves where I think we lose functionality.
I think obviously the umbrella of USDA and AFIS and everything is, is the most streamlined way of doing it. It's a matter of trying to find the dollars to fund it. Um, you know, for, for the record, uh, the twenty one, uh, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six agreement, the total program cost is a hundred and twenty one thousand, one hundred sixty one. And the county's portion of that is ninety four thousand, five hundred. The balance being made up of twenty six thousand, six hundred and some changes, uh, from state and federal other sources. Um. So, so that, that, and there, and there's a big chunk of that as well that is administrated, you know, vehicles and, and, and all the other behind the scenes stuff to about, um, forty five thousand dollars a year. Um. Again, I, I see, always have seen the value in it. It's, it's a matter of trying to find those funds for it. This year we scraped pretty deep into this year's budget in order to, to be able to fund, fully fund our portion of it this year. Um, I think, you know, reaching out to some of these other groups might be a way of looking at that. Um. And is it my understanding that you do direct work with, uh, Harney Electric and O-Tech? And is that billed separately?
I believe so. I don't do billing, so I don't know how that works. But I know when I do my time, you know, I put in X amount of hours for Harney Electric. And there's category for it, the bookkeeper, I don't know if they go directly to Harney Electric or how it works.
So if there's, it, Mike, um, the, the point of my question is that if you're, if you're working for other entities, then really the cost of the program exceeds a hundred and twenty one thousand. If, if you're directly working with or for another entity, Harney Electric or whoever that might be, um. So that, that really raises the cost of the entire program. And my idea there was that if there was work being done for Harney Electric, that, then they should contract through us.
I'm sure they can.
You know.
When I, I, I believe that's the way it works. I believe Harney Electric pays. I don't actually worry it goes, but I believe Harney Electric actually writes a check to, I don't know what category you have to.
So I'm wondering if that twenty six thousand is part of that then. Is that, is that money that the state's taking in from that's? And then, then it would accurately reflect the, the cost is a hundred and twenty one thousand.
I'm sure the check goes to AFIS or it goes and they, they give you that. They take their.
Who can confirm that for us? Michael Bondow, would you?
It, it, I guess, yeah, that would be part of the question then to, to, uh, to identify what the, the state and federal share, how, what that's comprised of.
And whether or not Harney Electric is paying it for these services to whoever.
Separately, if that's a separate check following together.
That would be good information. One of the things, you know, I don't know, uh, is that you, counties used to be able to put on the ballot to establish a predator control district, but then the state took that ability away. I don't know why, but of course it feels, it feels like to harm us, um, you know, and to not let us ever make any, uh, decisions here locally. But, uh, I guess I'll need to look into that. I've asked that a few times and no one ever has the answer, but it was, I don't know, five or six years ago, maybe or so, where we were just getting ready to try to do that here locally, because if there's enough interest enough of our population says, yeah, we would, we would vote for that because we know the county's getting where they, they're not going to be able to, to finance it anymore. Um, and then, then it was taken away to where we were not even enabled to do that. So I'll look to see if that ever changed or, or if we can get, um, get it to change in that that's another possible option. Um. Does anyone have any knowledge of that in case you know more than I do about that situation? Okay, thank you.
Perhaps the next steps for the court would be to have the N RAC reach out to some of these parties. And we talked about Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and others and see if we can develop some relationships with them for funding and also our federal land management partners as well. Because when I look through the quarterly reports for wildlife services, a lot of those acreages that are covered are federal acreages and they may have some funding that we could use. So maybe in the next couple of months, we'll start putting together a list of resources.
Would you also look into our local, um, stock growers and Farm Bureau folks and, and see if you can get on their agenda to just say, do you think you all would be willing, we've tried without success years ago to, to have a wolf fund here locally, you know, to do, help pay for depredations different than the, the program from the state and everyone, there was enough people that said yes, and then almost nobody wanted to write that check. So just if that's a possibility to be another piece of it.
From the reports, the last couple of reports, um, but well, from January twenty five to March of twenty five, um, B L M fifteen thousand, six hundred acres, private land, twenty thousand, almost twenty one thousand. So almost half of, of what you dealt with there. And then, uh, July twenty four to January twenty five, total acres, a hundred fifty seven thousand, private land, sixty one thousand, and total federal land with B L M and other is eighty, ninety plus thousand acres. So, yeah, I mean, in both of these, a, a big, a big half or, or majority of is on public lands. Um, does, do you guys get any calls from the B L M as far as any kind of predator on wild horses?
No, no, I mean, we're starting to see more cougars eat wild horses, um, reports of that, but, uh.
But when they have a kill, they don't call you guys to see about dealing with it or anything?
No. And I doubt.
And you may not want, yeah, you may not want to. And I was just curious because if, if they were, then that's a leverage point to.
No, that, I mean, given the fact that they're over, uh, um, H M L or A M L everywhere, I can't imagine that they, um, call us to deal with that.
I know in my past experience, we didn't in Nevada, which is where I dealt with them mostly, but, um, just curious if you did get them here or not. Um, I think, you know, with some. Um, I think, you know, with some research with outside organizations, trying to find some funding, some partnerships there or whatever to continue the program. Then the court, you know, if we can or if we can't, then the court has to decide whether it's a, you know, it's going to be a priority and we fund it through general fund. Cause that's, you know, other than a few dollars from Taylor grazing at, that's the only place we're going to fund it from is, is through general fund. Um, you know, general fund has its, has its limitations and issues of trying to do other. Management in our county government, so, um, this is a special one I have to.
I'll track down the Predator Control District, uh, the ability for counties to establish them on that anymore.
Sir. What kind of money are you looking at from outside? Do you guys have any idea what you can? How much outside money you need? I mean, the more the merrier. I get that part, but.
How, how much is Taylor grazing for you?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I want to say. I want to say about sixteen thousand dollars for some reason. But, um, because we don't get the full, it's, it's kind of a shared portion of it. Um, but if, if we dedicated that total amount, roughly that amount every year, fifteen thousand. And then being a partner, obviously, I think the county needs to be a partner in it. So the county going to have some general funds and then some, and, and, you know. Just say we put half of that forty thousand or forty five thousand in, and then we have to look for. That's, you know, sixty thousand, so we have to look for another thirty five thousand dollars.
When we were a few years ago trying to prop this up, um, and it was the COVID years and there was the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money. There, uh, one of the, um. Allowable uses was for economic development that had been harmed by COVID, et cetera. And, uh, we were able to justify the fact that our hunting industry has been harmed greatly and. That predator control is, is a key piece to helping our, you know, our hunting, um. In certain respects and, but that was a one time thing. We don't have that money. We've, we used ARPA money for many things over the years to try to help out and it's gone.
So our budgeted this year for Taylor grazing, uh. Estimated revenues from Taylor grazing, Taylor grazing is twenty nine thousand this year. Then that's within, that's the decision. Are we going to use that? That entire amount for this and not have anything left over for any kind of range projects or?
We need to have that discussion with the alignment central, yeah.
Yeah, see.
That's going to be a question whenever you start chasing this outside money. How much do you need? Be nice to have some kind of an idea. Maybe we can spread it out.
Um, so historically. It looks like actual revenue, we got more in twenty four, twenty five than what we had budgeted. We budgeted thirty and received sixty three, so it's. And then in twenty two, twenty three, we didn't get anything in twenty three, twenty four. Oh, that was a double payment. That's why, that was a double payment. Yeah. So average, it's looking like it's about thirty thousand dollars a year. If we took half of it towards this program and used half towards other range, uh, quote, you know, uh, projects with the BLM or whatever, that might. Something, but.
Yeah.
But we're still looking at about fifteen thousand from Taylor grazing. Anything else? Any other? Comments on predator control, AFIS? We do thank you, Adam. I mean, you know, it is a vital service. We, we recognize that. I recognize that. It's, um, again, it just comes down to being able to pay for it. And, and we have to start this conversation now because we're about to, well, in January, February, we'll start our budget cycle again and, and. We get to that, we don't talk about it until we get to that point, then it's going to be like, where's the money coming from? So, um, hopefully we can keep it going. And we'll. Through the N-RAC, the N-RAC, you know, it's got some good people on there with some good, good ideas, I think. So hopefully we can come up with. You know, some funding.
Are there any, uh, other contract alternatives that are less expensive but provide some through AFIS? Okay, I just want to ask in case.
The downfall, we switched to something else like. Right now Wildlife Services owns all the, we got everything. If you start from scratch, you're going to bust past ninety four grains so fast. Perhaps weapons and you name it, but it will, it will. Kind of penciling it out, it wouldn't work that way.
Coming from USDA and AFIS, is there any funding available through that, through that stream?
Not, no.
So my mom.
I can, I can definitely talk to Shane and see. I know they shovelled a lot of funds around. I suppose these counties are down, so.
Am I, I mean, we got the AOC conference coming up and I might ask. Um, what we might ask is we're talking to our counterparts. Um, and it might help, I don't know exactly what all counties have a, an AFIS. Could you get us that information? I, what I'm getting at is maybe we could go to those counties and find out what kind of free agent financing maybe they've come up with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Shane can have that at his fingertips.
Have you just sent to me an email and that way you kind of know who to focus on when we're starting to maybe talk to our counterparts at the conference this year? Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to share with us?
We kind of covered about everything.
Alright. Alright, we'll move along into old business, uh, only topic we have in there and we've kind of kept it on, on the agenda, just. To continue to work at it is flood mitigation planning. Uh, I know the Roadmaster, um, and Brandon, the Planning Director. You can, I'm not sure, you ran with that too, and then you guys went out and looked at Foley and whatnot. Um, I'm going to let you guys speak to it, but I think the plan possibly was to kind of wait and see. If the need was going to be there to cut Foley, and if it was, then we'd be ready to do it, but.
Yeah, and I guess that's, you know, my only concern is if, you know, if that's the plan of action, that's, you know, what we do is enough to. Mitigate that. That water and, and disperse it enough and then who on the other end are we throwing water at? And so there's some things to consider. I know Brandon was going to look and see if. Um, engineering wise to find that spot, um, that we could do it. Um, you know, it could be done relatively quickly, um, if you were to, you know, have the plan of action. This is the site we would do it at, um, you know, and, and just. Again, I think last year was, you know, a combination of, you know, the high waters, the, the fires, you know. A lot of things came into play and it all hit at once and I just, I hate to cut that road and it not be enough. Volume flow to, to, you know, disperse that water, um, and. So I, you know, I, again, I, we need to talk about it. We need to come up with a plan of, that makes everybody, you know. Warm and fuzzy and, and, and then do it. But, um, we just need to look at all the aspects of it, I guess.
Eric, do you think we need to have a, a little meeting with the, the proper jurisdictions? To talk about it or just, uh?
Well, again, I, you know, I think Brandon was going to task, you know, um, to look and see if there was a spot on there, number one. You know, putting in two, you know, I, I use these for an example, putting in two thirty six inch culverts or two forty two inch culverts. Is that going to be enough water flow when we have a year like last year to be able to disperse that enough to not have. Um, the effects that it did, um. I, you know, I, I have my doubts, um, when you have a flow like that. And again, I, you know, we did that to the state highway, um, back in two thousand and eleven or ten. And, you know, we had an issue and we just, we cut it. We cut the highway, closed the road and, um, you know, that. Took off that pressure, um, at, you know, an action like that, I mean, that's, that's why we went back in and. And redid West Loop Road. We went in there, um, and did the construction on that and repaved it, so. Um, if, you know, trucks, ACW, Hardy Rock need to go around for a temporary amount of time. Um, that road now is sufficient to be able to do that, um, if you were to close Foley. So, and I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm just saying that we need to look at everything before we decide, okay, yeah, let's put those in.
I think in order to really have done our due diligence, we need to have a firm. Could be Kleinschmidt had, did that report for us previously. Incorporate the data from last year's flooding and put it in and see, because some of their alternatives as described. Don't work for exactly what we had envisioned. We're talking about modifying them. And so we need to put it into their model to see, can we justify? Doing this work, is it going to have the effect that we think and is it, or is it going to adversely impact people downstream? But we can't use any of the funds that we got from the state until twenty seven, and at some point the state needs to understand they expended millions of dollars in resources to us last year. And if they would, uh, have some flexibility with how we can use those funds. So that we could prevent a catastrophe like that instead of, instead of trying to react to it. I'm just hopeful for a La Niña winter that's wet. And maybe we won't have to get flooded this year.
Did Regional Solutions have any?
Yeah, I was just getting ready to speak to that. So I, I had a meeting with, with Courtney Crowell, Regional Solutions and, um. Feather, Sam Huskies from Biz Oregon, and they recommended that, uh, there's a levy grant program. Uh, that we could probably do this work through and, uh, right now Brandon have a follow-up call with, uh, with Feather. Sometime this week, I think, um, that Brandon had some, some questions on it, but Brandon's in the process of filling out the application. And they felt that, that the funds that we would need to reengage Kleinschmidt would be an authorized use. And then also for the, the roadwork, um, if we do that, but then, but we don't know if we're going to do the roadwork or not, so how's that going to play? Or we're going to have a grant that we have money that's in reserve in case we need it? Or, or what? So, so there's some questions there that we got to, we got to, um, clear up with them. But we are working on trying to find funds to be able to at least reengage Kleinschmidt, and they estimated around a hundred thousand.
Is that something that's got a certain timeline to it?
Um, I don't know for sure. They didn't, I mean, they made it sound like it's open.
Is our planning director, is it a high priority right now?
Yeah.
Are the cities involved?
Not at this stage right now, because it's, it's, um, worked at the county commission, um. It would be our, our recommissioning of them with Kleinschmidt.
Okay, just still. If, if they need to be in. In the loop, yeah.
They, the city, the city of Burns anyway, um, got that same award, the, the same three million dollars. No, from the legislature, but, but it can't be, we're not going to get it until. I'm, I'm venturing probably third quarter of twenty seven before we, before we see that money. Um, but they're going after a loan with Business Oregon to be able to do the work. And then they'll have to pay the, not to pay the interest on it, um, until they get the money from. From the, uh, legislative award to pay off their loan. And we potentially may have had that same opportunity. They, they weren't, as we broached that when I talked with, with Courtney and, and Feather. That they weren't sure if a loan would, would be authorized for that re-engagement of planning. It would, it's for work, for doing actual work, but they weren't sure about, you know, loan being able to be used for the planning side of it.
Did they indicate they'll be able to track that down and give you a firm answer?
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were supposed to be looking into it. So it's just more, some more follow-up that we have to do with them. I had that call with them just. A week and a half ago, two weeks ago.
I had it in my general deliberation notes, but it does have to do with flood mitigation. It's worth noting that through the. Wetlands Collaborative, it came to my attention that this year there have been about twelve projects done. Through Soil and Water Conservation District, Natural Resource Conservation Service. That will help alleviate some of that flooding and some of the particular examples are down there on the Clemmons Ranch where they opened that up last year to let. More flow go through. They did some projects out there, so they'll be, they'll have even more capacity to let flow through. And out on South Harney, we had some issues with residents whose driveways had flooded. And they did some work out there. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the court and the public that there were about twelve projects through that, those organizations. Which will help alleviate some of the flooding pressure as well.
Um, that goes back to Eric's point that we, we open up a hole somewhere where it's backed up and it's got to go somewhere, so.
You know, I mean, again, there's ranches on the other side of Foley that would get affected. I mean, you're throwing more. Water on Foley's slew and, you know, whether it's Chance, Louis. Merrily, I mean, you're going to throw more water in their direction. So are you going to do more damage? You know, and again, I, the, the tribe has done what they had to do. Um, and I, I don't know if they're going to install head gates where they did breach that dike or they're just going to leave those open, but. You know, but most of that was, from my understanding, was from the Silvies, you know, we're talking about the effects of Foley. Backing up and if you look at, you know, the. The damage or the water that was backing up on there, there's really only one. One, maybe two residents that were getting affected with that backup. Pushing it more towards the Silvies River. Once the Silvies River went over, you know, at the tribe, then that was a whole nother thing, so. Um, so you, you, you need to weigh out, you know. Effecting how many people down here and a one resident here, I, you know. Just need to look at everything because I've been in so many of those where you help one person and then you end up, you know. Doing damage to five others down the, downstream.
Well, I think that's, that's definitely a part that Kleinschmidt would be able to help us identify. Cause and effective actions.
So what, what's going on is, um, Brandon is going to be, is working on the levy grant thing to see if, if we can get some funding for the Kleinschmidt. And then Eric is, uh, proposing that we, we have more conversations, right?
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, Robin, and we had that conversation when we met out there. I mean, it's, it's not something that we have to do right now. I mean, if it's. If they decide that, you know, this is the spot, this is how big the culverts need to be and, you know. Do it, I, you know, I don't really like to do it, but I can do it in the middle of January or February. I mean, we've gotten till. When we really start getting that push to be able to, you know, to actually put it in there. So. Um, I just want to make sure we have all the data, the information that we need before we start cutting the road.
Well, thank you for your work on this too.
Anything else flood related?
I have a question. Does the county have any hydraulic maps of the slew system and how it all flows? I, those, those slews have been around forever. I would assume that somewhere. Historically, there would be some maps of where all those slews went that would help lead you down the right direction to answer some of those questions.
Well, I like to think that's true, but.
I also know that this, this flooding season, there were lots of aerial footage taken of where the water was flowing and going. There was some way to access that that would help answer some of those questions and where does that water go, you know?
I think we'll have plenty of information on what happened this year. How much historical, I don't know.
The, the Kleinschmidt firm did that and hydraulically mapped and did models of if you have certain flows, how that's going to affect it. And what we really want to do is have them incorporate the data from this last flood. Not only to see how their alternative mitigation measures would work, but also to. Truth it a little bit and see, did your model really show what it really did? And then one, once we have more data, then I think we're going to need to engage the surrounding landowners because they may know something that. The models don't show and to make sure they're not caught off guard. Yeah, we have, we have modeling and maps.
I, I have myself some aerial footage that I took. And I know an individual in the community who has a YouTube channel who also, and I might download that. That video next time just to, just to kind of, it's pretty good, it shows the, I think it was taken later on. Maybe a week into the flooding, because it really shows the valley and shows where a lot of that water went to. Um, anything? Final thoughts? New business, um, preliminary petition for necessity of way. So I've asked, um, Colby Marshall to kind of give us a little background on this. Um, I do have. A map, the, basically what we're looking at here. It took us a little bit on this because we don't obviously do this very often and I can't see that we've done it. That the county's done it in a long time. So some conversation. So some conversation, consultation, back and forth between county council. Took us down a couple of different paths and I think the final path is basically a negotiation between the county. And the read and the petitioner, the applicant, um. To set up this this necessity of way, um. And. But I'll go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. Withers, thank you very much. Um, the uh Kobe Marshall is my name and I'm representing Rachel Johnson. Uh, who is the applicant here. Uh, Rachel Johnson lives outside of the area. She lives up in Washington State. And she contacted me about six months ago about the possibility of listing this piece of property. It's a hundred and sixty acre. Piece of property that sits um uh north of Sod House Lane in between the Narrows and Refuge Headquarters. Um, just a bit of background, uh the her family. Uh, the Reed family, this piece of ground was actually patented from Woodrow Wilson to the Reed family in nineteen eighteen. So this piece of property and a lot of other tracts that they the family once owned out there. Have been in the family since that period in time. So kind of a neat history and background. Uh, in fact, some of the refuge that is current refuge was owned by the Reed family and that was basically gifted over. To uh the refuge at some point in time. What she is asking for is uh the property itself sits landlocked. Uh, private landlords uh surround the property uh between her property and Sod House Lane and also. The refuge is on the northern side and the BLM is on the uh south eastern corner of the property. So in essence, the property sits landlocked. There is a piece of Harney County property, a forty acre piece. That is a a former refuge site, then gravel pit, and now I don't think is used uh by the county. Uh, for any real purpose at this point in time, but obviously still county home. Uh, the county property is is fenced out, although it's not been fully surveyed. And there is a fence line that runs uh north, south from Sod House Lane and then corners at. Um, Miss Johnson's property. The proposal is that the county uh would provide an access easement across. Uh, the county owned property from Sod House Lane north to terminate at the at the Johnson property. And Mrs. Johnson and her family are willing to incur all the costs. Uh, for this, they're willing to offset the survey, pay for the survey work. Um, and I've already met with uh the county surveyor at the site to talk about this. Uh, she is willing to pay for an easement if that at a reasonable cost. If that is something that the county needs basically to offset the potential precedent of providing a a a access easement across county property. So that's that's really the essence of the petition is it is the only viable route, uh legal access route to the property. It would allow the property to be put into beneficial use consistent with Hardy County zoning and land use rules. And it will not interfere with existing county operations or property uses currently.
And from a legal standpoint, if we were to grant an easement through there, would that easement? Go on through perpetuity if we were to disperse of that property?
It would be absolutely, it would be a an ingress and egress easement because that. That's what would need, that's what would be needed for the Johnson family or potential future owner to be able to utilize that property. Constructive residence, the requirement at some point in time, if we were to go to the county planning commission and ask for a building permit out there. Is they would require us to have a legal access easement there.
What is the current poll, what are the current policies, if any, for the county for when? An access easement to landlocked area of county road? I mean, are we? Are we supposed to do that or is it optional? What you know, what legally must we do? Um, certainly can we make it dependent upon the land, the requesting landlord's ability to pay all costs? I mean. What can we do and what can't we do?
So um in two thousand two, i- if it. And this is the 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 part that we kind of had to find out um through council and figure out the proper way to pursue this. Um, initially, I was viewing it that we would probably do like when we vacate any uh right of way or something, uh. An unused easement in like in Crane, the ones that we've done. Um, that we would basically be creating one through the court. And then. After talking with county council and finding me out that in in two thousand two ordinance, two thousand two dash fifty two in the matter of removal of the county court. From jurisdiction over statutory ways of necessity. And it basically says Hardy County Court feels that the Circuit Court is a pro is a preferable forum. For litigating the establishment of statutory ways of necessity. So in this ordinance, it took that that authority out of our hands. And and the last word then that I got from county council was that it would be better than for us just to negotiate directly from the county to the. To the petitioner and come about and basically then um on page two here, the purchase of reasonable price easement. Um, with it's it's a direct negotiation between us and them.
I would hate to see people denied access to their property. Because it was landlocked by county property. And so to me, it seems reasonable to grant an easement, especially if they're willing to pay all the costs. And I wouldn't expect any purchase of easement, just to to cover the cost would be more than.
Who maintains the easement?
Uh, they do. It's 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 almost as if they were buying the piece of property. Um, it's still.
I again, I I think the I now that this piece of property came up, I think we put limbs in there yesterday. Okay, from a tree we trimmed. That that's been the first time in seventeen years that. Like we've been in that piece of property. It's an old landfill. They closed it. They monitored the the gas. Out of there, yeah, emissions out of it and I we just.
Maybe sell sell the property and then use that money to fund Avids. County needs money to have an asset.
You'd like assistance with that.
I would agree that that it's on our county rolls and to get rid of it, but because of its history as a landfill. I'm sure that there's gonna be a lot of EBA considerations that are gonna go along with that. And it's probably gonna be in county ownership for a long time because of that landfill. So instead of having it just sit there and do nothing, at least make it uh or allow the easement to um. To facilitate access to another property. You know, but I don't I don't see us being able to dispose of it early anytime soon. Uh, so I wanted this on the agenda today though, just cuz I didn't obviously wanna be making deals without the court's uh knowledge of it. But I also didn't want the petitioner to be incurring surveying costs and everything else. Until we kind of at least had a had an agreement that or an understanding that uh there was any objection to it.
Do you want a motion to take action on?
Um, I I probably would like to. Um, I don't have it on here really. Now, we don't have anything listed as action or not action, but um. A motion just to say yes, that we're in favor of working towards granting this easement would be sufficient.
I move to grant an easement. Across the described piece of Harney County property to Rachel Johnson, who will bear the associated costs related to easement.
Uh, you're you're moving that we're in support of it? I second.
So then a motion has been made and seconded to to support the application and the negotiation of creating an easement. Across the uh piece of Harney County owned property. Uh, for the and for the applicant to uh bear the costs associated, reasonable costs associated with that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And opposed?
I'd like to thank Colby for the. Very nice way you laid it all out for us or a reference. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I added added some additional maps into that packet and there is also the. Deed card that was in there that shows the the history of the family ownership. And I went over to the title company and made a copy of the actual patent that was held uh at the title office. Uh, for this, and it only says that the family's owned it since nineteen fifty, but it was originally patented to nineteen eighteen. So it's. It's kind of a neat piece of knowledge.
Yeah, no, this is this is very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. The judge and county council have been very helpful in helping uh bring. Uh, the conversation to this point and helping provide some guidance. So I appreciate that.
Again, it's not something that we've done frequently or I can't even, I I would say it hasn't been done since two thousand two or before two thousand two since.
Usually when something brand new, you know, hits us and it's not time sensitive, we'll say, well, let's. Let's delay it for our a- action. For another time and make sure we're all, but this this feels very complete.
I do, thank you. All right, uh, anything else? Moving on, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four. Renaming Fund Two Thirty One to the Jail Capital Improvement Fund.
I've been making all these changes here recently to go from jail improvement to courthouse annex because that's how we use the funds.
We did, we did. So so this is the budgetary side of it. Um. In order to spend the funds that we've acquired, the OJD funds, the. The uh funds that we have in the jail reserve account and some uh nine one one. Funds that are in that that are in that fund itself, we ba- it has to be appropriated. I will admit at the time of the budget that I didn't look forward, look in advance to this. So that's why we're having to do a supplemental budget to put this all into the same place. Appropriated, put it in the same place and then be able to expend it out of this out of this fund. So the first step. In this is that there was um a a fund for the for the OJD. Uh. Funds that we had anticipated uh accepting or receiving. So we're gonna rename it. We're gonna rename it from OJD Grant Funds to Jail Capital Improvement Fund. And then we're gonna move the other funds from. The jail reserve and from. Uh, the nine one one fund into this fund here. This is the first, like I said, the first step, and then we'll have to do a supplemental budget. For the next step, but this created a place for us to move it to or will create a place for us to move it to. It's it's just the budgetary administrating side of doing it.
I'm in support.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four in the matter of name change for Fund Two Thirty One from courthouse annex grant. To jail capital improvement. This being the fifth day of November twenty twenty five and a day set aside for regular meeting of the Harney County Court and there being President William Hart. County Judge Patty Doro, County Commissioner and Rob Frank, County Commissioner, and whereas Fund Two Thirty One was created. For the twenty twenty five, twenty six fiscal year with anticipated funding from Oregon Department of Justice for a courthouse annex project. And a need for jail improvements was deemed necessary and an intergovernmental agreement was signed by both parties. Uh, reauthorizing funding for jail improvements and therefore be it resolved that the newly named jail. Capital Improvement Fund number two thirty one is approved on the uh for the twenty twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. This date.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty four in the matter of name change for fund. Number two thirty one from courthouse annex grant to jail capital improvement as read.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to uh authorize resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four in the matter of of name change for Fund Two Thirty One. From courthouse annex to jail. Capital Improvement as read. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With us this morning. Merle Reed, how are you doing, Merle?
I'm just doing all good.
Good, good to see you.
Thank you.
We missed the conversation about Wildlife Services, but we just delegated the fundraising, Merle, so.
Thank you.
That one person that's not there on time gets nominated.
I was ten ten thirty, ten thirty is what I was told, but there was must have been. Told wrong.
Well, we we changed our county court time to begin at nine thirty a couple of sessions ago.
Okay.
We we're having lots of lively debate and conversation, so we moved it a little earlier.
Okay.
Oh, you skipped public comments.
No. Okay, um, let me see, where's my? Take care of that. Um. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, no, no.
On the predator control?
Yeah, just the predator control.
Okay.
Did you have you guys already covered that or not?
Yeah, we covered it already.
Damn.
That's what I was gonna say, if you had any input, I we'd go ahead and hear any comment you might.
I know, what was what was this this discussion or are we talking about?
So we. Last year or this year, in order to um. In order to fund the program. We had to cut pretty deep into all of our Taylor grazing funds that we had left and county general fund dollars. Um. We're not, we're not gonna have as much Taylor grazing funds next year. Um, and obviously even with with that, it's it's a big hit to the general fund. So we had a discussion on possible things and ways of finding some funding for it. The N-RAT, uh, which you're a member of the N-RAT.
Right.
Um, we'll reach out hopefully to other sporting type um organizations, Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, the local cattle growers, stock growers. Uh, you know, type of organizations and see if we can't try and generate some kind of assistance in funding for for that. In addition to county funds and Taylor grazing funds. So that's kind of where we left it at.
No, I'm just, I'm just a big supporter of it. For the whole county. I think it's something that benefits our whole county. Uh, the South End, North End, whatever. And I I just, I think it's important that we. Don't lose that. Um, so that's why I was here supportive of it, but we'll all try to get. There was three of us, um, they got, were involved in it, Keith Bowser, Shane Autley and myself that. Kinda um. Brought it to the brought it to the county court. Three years ago and got it back installed. So we'll get more active about what we can do about raising money and getting ahead of it. Because like I said, I think it's it's critical that we have it, especially with the. With the wolves coming and I mean, the way that I I gather is you don't have that position. Nobody else can do anything about it, so.
Well, um, Lee Foster and Adam Kemper were here. And they kind of highlighted on the same thing that there is some work that a private entity or a county employee might be able to do, but there's gonna be a lot more hoops for them to jump through in order to do it. Versus the AFIS employee who already has clearances and agreements and authority. So. It it would be much more streamlined to keep the system we have. It's just a matter of finding the funds to to keep it going.
Oh, we'll we'll get we'll get involved and work on that and see what we can do about reaching out to some of these organizations. And help support that.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Sorry I was late and I didn't.
Nope, that's all right. Um. So next topic up on new business is Fair Board Betty Morgan expenditure. I don't have. I don't have any documentation on this. I know the agreement says that any expenditures out of that fund have to be approved by the county court.
Yep, the the Fair Board had an opportunity arise recently that would allow them to procure. Uh, livestock system and arena system with. Reusable panels and different configurations for the indoor event center. And identified the Betty Morgan Fund as being an appropriate fund to buy those. Buy that equipment with because the Betty Morgan Fund was set up for just such such an expense. For example, the outdoor arena is the Betty Morgan Arena. But because that. Be because when that fund was set up, they were concerned about the use of that money. It was put in.
It's a fund.
They have to come before the county court to get that approved. And so we invited the Fair Board and I think Chair Mir. Probably speak more to it.
I think part of the concern when they did that by the family was that they didn't want those funds to get absorbed or used just in general operations. But used towards more substantive additions or um.
Capital, capital investment.
Capital investments, yeah.
And how much is in that fund?
I don't, I'll have to go look.
It's it's just under two hundred and fifty thousand.
It's in the Betty Morgan Fund. It's in the Betty Morgan Fund?
Yes. I have for the board, I didn't make copies, but I have a package here. And I have a letter too, and I can read that, but there's a letter, here is a letter of support from Mary Lee White. Um, here's what we, probably push a button on the computer, so here is uh the arena package and the cost. And then here are two different like-minded setups. Um, we'll just read my letter, because I think it hit some points, and if you guys have some problem, then uh, kinda stay on topic here, but um, Monday night, the Harney County Fair unanimously voted to approve the use of funds for the, from the Betty Morgan Trust for the purchase of a prefer around arena package setup uh for the new indoor event center. Uh, because the event center is designed as a multi-purpose of facilities, it's essential that the equipment we invest in allows for flexible and efficient configurations. The pre-fert arena system provides the adaptability required to support a wide range of events, uh including livestock shows, rodeo, plummy gatherings, expeditions. Um, although the event center is not quite complete, and we mean that by phase two, um, this uh investment will allow the facility to begin using it for some of its intended purposes. Um, without this purchase, the only known remains is a shell. With the addition of this equipment, we can start hosting events and gathering youth and community engagement. Orders already received insurance from several organizations wishing to utilize the facility for equine-related activities. Some of those being the um junior high rodeo finals, which would be in the spring, uh Bronkenbull Showdown, um, the barrel racing, uh individuals riding quads and team branding competitions. In addition to its value for the fair and community events, this panel package would also play a key role in emergency management. Uh, the flexibility, design and variety of pin sizes will enable the fairgrounds to serve as the emergency management center, providing safe and efficient housing for livestock during disasters or other emergencies. Um, before reaching this decision, the Fair Board conducted thorough research and consultation with multiple industry leaders experiencing arena design and event operations. These consultations include representatives from other fairgrounds, event centers, professionals who regularly use such facilities, uh such as locally legacy rodeo, but they all strongly recommend the pre-fert arena system for its quality, versatility and long-term value. Uh, the board also reached out to members of the White family connected to the Betty Morgan Trust, included in the correspondence, they gave us a letter of support from Mary Lee White, expressing her crumple with refusal and the use of the funds. Um, it should be noted that the Betty Morgan Funds, as Commissioner Frank mentioned, uh were previously used to purchase the WW livestock equipment for the outdoor arena. Uh, as established in the terms of the, of the rest of the, uh, any expenditure require approval from the Harney County Court. Um, we're here today therefore to respect your request, your authorization of funds to use for this purpose. The package does represent a first step uh to complete the arena, so Fair Board anticipation, desk, investment, additional investment of approximately ten to fifteen thousand dollars uh to acquire the pieces of the roving equipment, including a roving chute and lead-up as well as the stripping chute, so those are specific pieces of equipment to complete that package. Um, through our connections and network within the industry, we've already secured the opportunity to possibly purchase these after the rodeo finals in Las Vegas, where they will have um those items available to use at a discount while being used for the month event. Um, the board believes this investment will significantly enhance the fairgrounds' functionality, strengthen Harney County's emergency preparedness, ensure that the new event center can begin serving the community as intended. It also honors the legacy of Betty Morgan by continuing to support agriculture and community development in Harney County. And so we thank you for your time and consideration, um, if you have any questions, uh, you want to answer them?
That's a good letter, answered my questions, except, but the total ask at this point is.
The total ask would be for a hundred and sixty-six thousand. And so the value um of the package, uh, we were to purchase that new would be a two hundred and seventeen thousand. Um, so we're saving almost fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, so the, the panels are in uh Riverton, Wyoming, and so uh we have a complete inventory list of what all those pieces and parts are. Um, we've had uh pictures uh of all the equipment. Uh, recent pictures are not old pictures, pictures are timestamped, you can kind of verify those things. Um, but it's a complete package there. Um, preferred is, is not the cheapest system, but it provides the most amount of value. Um, the nice thing about the preferred system is its, its uh ability to function in different uh formats. And that's what really fits the event center, its ability to be able to move and function in different capacities.
And that includes your transportation costs and everything?
Yeah, so the transportation uh to here, uh, we actually have that donated, so we'll be able to get it here free charge.
Awesome.
Is, is that system you're talking about, is that specifically one of these three options or?
Yeah, it's this, it's this option here.
This one?
Yeah, and so these are reference points um to be able to just compare the, the value of the dollars. Um, and so these were uh some representatives of those companies that I reached out with. The biggest difference is, is, is the amount of panels and the, and the function that, that exist. Um, the, the Powder River Rodeo as well as the Red River Arenas, they are panel systems, but they're not designed, uh, they're designed to be panel systems that set up permanently. And so preferreds the, is the only um manufacturer in the industry that allows the the ability to set up, tear down and reconfigure with the least amount of ease. Um, not saying that the other systems can't be done, but they're not designed to be done that way, where preferreds are. And so they're, they're designed to be set up or down, um, uh, we look at the, the ability and the ultimate uses. Um, we're gonna have to be able to reconfigure for different events, pull the, the equipment out, um, so the value of that is, is really what we're getting.
So this system wouldn't be uh cemented in where it's not flexible or movable or anything?
Everything is designed for the purpose of being adaptable and as flexible as literally possible, that's the, the massive advantage of this system. And it's a premier system, you go to any of them like the NFRs out there, like all that stuff, it's all preferred, this is top of the line stuff.
With these that you went out for, from these different, did they give you, um, did they have?
Yeah, so there, yeah, there are dollar amounts and quotes, so if we looked at any kind of procurement type um um reasons that we have, there is actually uh the difference.
Let me grab real quick like the procurement policy.
It's, it's uh, I put the priority in that, really hard to compare these systems. Apples to apples, um, so you know, like I said, if, if you wanted just the cheapest system, you could go buy the cheapest system. That isn't gonna give the fairgrounds with, or the county, or, or the people's tax dollars, or the trust fund that is being invested into it, um, the same value, um, that's, that's the hard part.
The utility and the flexibility.
Well, not just the quality, like the gauge of steel that's used in preferred stuff versus like high gold. I got a whole pile of panels in my place that haven't had rough stock in them, and they're bent up, twisted up, they're just I, I'm not even gonna post them on Harney County Classic, I tell them when I've been with them.
When you talk to say like the Shute County Fairgrounds or any of those other facilities, then their value is always in full research. Um, and another good thing within the industry when you talk to people is preferred's been around the longest, it was the leader in, in really, you know, equine and, and rodeo equipment, and, and they're the strongest company that's not going anywhere, so when you look down the road and say, hey, we, we, you know, things will get damaged, it's the nature of, of animals and livestock, but it's a reputable company that's been around for, I think, since nineteen fifty-one. So it's a company that's gonna continue to be around, so if you need a replacement panel or a gate, um, they're not done looking to piece of your system, it can stay.
And, and if uh, if we had security issues out at the fairgrounds, how easy would it be for these things to be stolen?
Stolen, once, once.
I just like to ask, you know.
Once they're, once they're hooked up stealing.
Do we have security cameras yet?
I don't think we have any of that yet, but in the same sense that it's easily movable, it's not easily stealable, you know? Um, they, they are panels, there's gonna definitely be some, some.
Just one to ask.
Yeah.
There, there, there is always that Johnny Cash, you know, throws out one piece at a time.
Yeah, yeah, one, one piece at a time.
I think they're easily reconfigurable with the proper equipment, but you just go out and two people latch on to them and start yarding out, they're, they're too heavy.
They're, they're too heavy, yeah, yeah, that's a good point, with, with the proper equipment.
Yes.
Um, so consulting the, the uh procurement policy and the changes by statute of the amounts for procurement, different levels of procurement, this would fall into an intermediate procurement um purchase, and that's uh between twenty-five thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand, so it would fall in as an intermediate. And you've basically already done the work that would need to be done, because you just have to solicit three informal quotes, which you've got here, um, and you have to solicit them, if you only get two, you're good to go, but you got all three, so that makes it better. So, so please keep all of this as part of the record uh for the procurement, but it would fall within that, so so we wouldn't have to do any of the procurement work.
Nice, I need a quick word, I did drive in, hoping to catch the public comment on this, um. May I speak?
Sure, go ahead. On this topic?
Yeah, yeah, um, anyway, it's, my name is Tim Alton, for the record. Um, I would just highly encourage you guys to uh move to approve this purchase. I actually just had the opportunity, last week I was at the Pendleton Leather Show. Huge trade show for leather crafters, I'm a supplier, so there's a ton of people up there. And Pat Beard, who is the general manager of the convention center, he's been in rodeo his entire life. He's been a pickup man at the NFR, at the Pendleton Roundup. Um, he said, hey, you wanna come see our new arena? And I was like, yeah, so we were just setting up the trade show booth. And so he is in charge of convention center and tourism, bringing events to Pendleton to develop economic development and bring business to the town. And so I actually sent pictures to Pat, um, they just built an arena that is like almost identical footprint to this facility that you guys have been putting together, and he was just super excited to share it with me. Like, the concrete at the floor level's the same, I mean, the whole structure, like, I, it's different color, but it's the same. And it has been open since May and has been booked non-stop. He said, we're having jackpots, we're having horse shows, we're having college rodeos, and they built that to bring out-of-town money to Pendleton, because they're paying for hotels, they're shopping at restaurants. They're, you know, they're spending money in the community, like the Pendleton Leather Show, that was something not in that facility, but also property owned by the city of Pendleton. There's people from Alaska, there's people from Texas, there's people from all over the country, they're all staying in Airbnbs, hotels, eating at restaurants, shopping at stores, and I saw the post, I had this back on Facebook, asking for input on whether you should do a contractor for the economic development or in-house, I think in-house is good. Um, but if you're looking at ways to bring revenue and support the local businesses, getting that facility up and running, I think is probably the most bang for your buck that you will get. Rather than contracting somebody to try and bring big businesses, you can use the assets you already have. The building's already there, and it's gonna be big bucks, I mean, they have the data of what each person spends when they come to an event, and it's not the same dollars that are going from business to business, or rancher to the fuel shop, it's out-of-town money when you bring people to these events, and so that's why I would just highly encourage you to take this opportunity to save, you know, like sixty thousand dollars and get this facility up and running um as soon as possible to where it can be used by the community and support the community businesses.
And, and I can give you a little update on the, on the building, because we're kind of course on.
I actually asked his name first, so it's not bad.
Tim Alton, L B E.
Um, we did get, uh, so the building, uh, the phase one is really close to being completely finished, we actually lost uh power and water. Um, so the building itself was really close to being, to being completely finished. Um, we procured dirt for the main arena for free, so we got um uh a landowner out by River Springs is donating all the dirt for us, about eighteen thousand um two yards of sand, and um we do have in our, our construction budget, but it's gonna cost us about twenty-five thousand, get that dirt laid in and laser leveled, um, that'll happen before the first of December, um, so we're really close to being done. I found this particular um, um, package just because of some networking. So I knew the dirt was coming, I wanted to start reaching out and, and seeing what was available and how much things were gonna cost us, so we could start planning. And just in that networking, um, Hank Franzin is the, is the gentleman's name that is on the invoice there, that's actually selling the setup. Um, and just through networking and connection, I was put in contact with him, that was, that was um he, he's a preferred dealer, and so that was purchased and set up for a one-time use. And then the person fell back on um the actual payment and purchasing. So he's sitting on, you know, over two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of equipment, and he needs to sell it just because he needs the money. And so that's, that's how we came about this, it was just through some networking that we found this, just talking to the right people. And so, um, that's how we found this package, is that basically someone is in need and uh of the money, and we're in need of the package, so it was really just a timing deal. Um, he did, uh, you know, I explained to him that we have a process that we have to go through in order, you know, to, to utilize the funds, and so the Fair Board now has been voted in favor of it, and so now you're asking for you. Um, it is being held for us for only this week. And so this isn't something that we can guarantee the purchase of this week, not that someone else is out there trying to buy it, but he will no longer hold that for us, so time is kind of of the essence, only because this gentleman is, is proud of our money. That's kinda how we got to roll the rap, so. Um, the other difference too is the, when we talked to the Powder River Rodeo or the, or the Red River Arenas, or the other two people that I, that I spoke with, to have those, um, you know, if we were to say, let's go ahead with one of their packages, we're probably on, on theirs, we're probably looking at four months to five months out for that complete package to be built. So those, those big packages, those companies don't hold an inventory, and so they would have to be built. And so just the timeline of, of where their manufacturing is at, it's probably four or five things, so. Uh, you know, where, where we wanna try to have this going as soon as possible to start utilizing the facility, it meets several goals for us.
Craig, a couple of questions on just update to the event center, so, I mean, I was making a point to drive out there. I'm one of the cars they used to stay in there, and they'd come over, I'd say, I'm, I'm just looking from a distance, I do it every time I come into town. I'm very pleased with how it's progressing, but I, you know, windows and doors, is that the main thing left to do?
That's some of the very last touches, um, the, the contracting supervisor, uh Mike Sloop, and the owner of Five Star Builders, they are big hunters, so, um, they're really slow, we're not on the same timeline, so they're both gone hunting. And they come back this week and we have another uh construction committee meeting, and that's where we'll finalize the last things, and uh they'll have the money spent in our budgets, and so we'll know exactly where we're at on a better figure for money that could be spent. Um, what amenities need to be used for that money, and so we'll have some final decisions to finalize it.
And uh for any, anybody, um additional insurance, is additional insurance needed on any policies?
Our CIS agent, we did a walk-around, um.
Not that long ago.
Just after fair.
Yeah, just after.
Just after fair, myself and Jeremy went out and walked around, he found some stuff that's no longer there, so that'll come off. But then the stuff that's being built, it's about a wash, so, you know, as, as far as coverage dollars still.
No surprises, no.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and the main thing is, like I said, uh, you know, we, we have a phase two, um, you know, kind of the, on some other things, like we'd applied for a grant for phase two, um, that some free grant writing was, was awarded to us. Um, unfortunately, we didn't qualify under some guidelines of that grant. The nice part is, we have all the work that went into writing the grant, we do have all that work. Um, so when we talk about phase two, we're, you know, I wouldn't say back to the drawing board, but, but we're, we're ahead of where the drawing board's at, but we're back to reach out to, to work on phase two.
To be able to repurpose that previous network.
Exactly, we can repurpose that, and so, um, this puts us in the right step to have, uh, you know, use of the facility as it is, and let's benefit to the community and, and as well as the fairgrounds and the county, so.
So just looking at your, at your package here, is there actually four quotes here, because I see one, so, from, from Red River? One from Freeburg, one from Powder River.
So this here is. So this here is the the value, if you were to buy.
Oh, this is the new.
This this is the value, we're getting this for a hundred and sixty-six thousand, this would be the value if we bought that new. So it's just a kind of proof of where our savings are at, yeah, yeah.
I was just, I was like. You were saying prefer.
Here's the actual, here's the actual invent.
This is the actual quote?
The actual quote, yeah, yeah, and because it's prefert, um, this is all the same items listed there, this is just, this would be the actual quote. That we would write the check for, um, and this is. If we were to, you know, use him as a dealer or directly work with Prefert, um, this is what that system would cost brand new. So it's just kind of proof of the saving that we're that we're.
Basically brand new, it's gonna use.
Yeah, it's been it's been used.
They buy a brand new setup every year and then sell it so cheap or they do.
Yeah, so so at the national finals of the South Fund and that's where we can procure the 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 last remaining items for the roping. Every year during the finals, they put in that equipment completely brand new and it'd be empty, sell it. And so, um. It's a it's a one-time use for all that and and they do that year after year after year, so.
Gotta look good for Vegas.
Yeah, gotta look good for Vegas, yeah.
Looks good for them, will look crazy.
Well, and and having, you know, when you when you talk to, you know, people within the industry, eat wine rodeo, whether it be cutting or whatever, the. The functionality of your of your. Equipment makes a big difference in people wanting to to use it and come back and rent it. Um, you know, no one wants to come somewhere where the gates all drag and, you know, they they wanna come. Time is money to them in a lot of aspects, so to have a facility that functions well, um, it really represents everything that we're doing there.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I would, you know. Basically, I think what we're proposing to do here with is in line with what the Morgan family wanted. Um, the money is there and available, so. I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any opposition myself to. Motion.
Uh, I support the unanimous decision the Fair Board made and I do think it aligns with the Betty Morgan Fund, so I would move to approve. The use of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to purchase the Prefert Arena System presented.
All second. A motion's been made and seconded to authorize the use of the Betty Morgan Family Trust Funds. Um. For the purchase of the Prefert Arena System as described and discussed. At the cost of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
I gotta get back to work, but thank you guys. I'm from Germany. It wasn't years, nice.
When you, and when you get a final, I mean, you have the uh I I uh a quote. But when you get the final contract, it's time to file a contract, put all that, bring some stuff together and blend package. Then you can have that for. But well, you put it in the in the agenda. Uh, last. Um, additional item is the vacation leave cash out um topic. Yesterday at the at the staff meeting, the county uh department head meeting. And because of a re- a recommendation or a suggestion that was placed in our suggestion box, uh, staff um. Suggested a annual op- an option for an annual vacation leave cash out, um. We kind of need to decide how much we're gonna authorize for that, whether it's a twenty-hour, forty-hour, a a a limit on it. Um, are we gonna any year, I mean, every year, if somebody has unused vacation, we're gonna allow them to do that? Are we gonna put a cap on it, you know, different concerns like that? There is a little bit of budgetary concern in that and the fact that that uh while if somebody uses vacation. It's the same as if they're getting paid, but if we're gonna pay it out on top of their salary. It's not budgeted for right now, so I don't even know if we'll be able to make to facilitate this this budget year. It's something that we would have to budget in next year, probably would.
The only, the only way that I can see that we could responsibly do it without completely changing the compensation packages. Is to only. Only allow a cash out request up to the remainder of the rollover. Vacationally cumulatively available, so for example, if. You've been here for ten years, you can have a max of two twenty-five hours to roll over. Each time you take some out of that, it's taken away and it doesn't come back. And once you have taken all two hundred and twenty-five hours, you can't cash out more of it and when you leave for whatever reason. That doesn't get paid out because right now, in theory, budgetarily, we should be carrying that liability anyway, because a person could accrue. Up to like three hundred and twenty-five hours with their rollover plus their four weeks of vacation if they've been here for ten years, so to me. I wouldn't have a problem with saying, yeah, you can cash out, but we're gonna keep track and once we've used up all your rollover. Because if we don't, if we allow them to keep building onto that, that'd be great, I wish we had money to do that, but we don't.
So the cap works right now, um, two hundred and twenty-five hours for whatever class of employee that is. Once you hit that amount, you stop accruing vacation. When you use it, if you use forty hours of that, now you're down to a hundred and eighty-five hours, then you start accruing. Then you start accruing vacation again up to that two twenty-five cap. So 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 theoretically, what could happen is if somebody had two hundred and twenty-five hours and we allowed him, say, we did it in the month of November. So that's kind of a Christmas bonus type of thing and they cashed in forty hours. Well, then they started accruing vacation again and they're backed up to their cap again within.
My my concern is just that it it will cost us money and. You know, we can't even add any type of an F T E for all these things that are important, whether it's in rap, kind of a. You know, natural resource person, administrator, the the things that we talk about payroll backup that. Are important, but we just don't have the money for, so I'm concerned about that, I want our our. I know our county. Have, we don't have much way to incentivize them and, you know, I'm I want us to pursue it, but I think we need to model this out a little bit. Because if we do make a policy change and make that policy and then two years later we realize we can't do this, you know, we cannot continue to do this. Then there'll be the folks who said, hey, you know, they got it, because, you know, let's just think it out.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, that's all is, I mean, I know I sound like the Grinch a lot, but. Maybe I've just been around too long, I've seen all the things that can happen and do happen and then you gotta deal with them, so.
So, because it's all kind of part of the same topic, um, two of the other suggestions that were submitted at the same time. One of them was um a longevity lump sum payment every year. Right now longevity payments after five years and a person starts accruing longevity pay is paid monthly in the pay in the paycheck monthly. Um, the proposal was to pay that out in a lump sum on the anniversary date, which we'd have to do it on an anniversary date. Whatever the employee's higher higher anniversary date is. Which we're paying it anyway, it's budgeted. Um, but we'd pay it out in one lump sum on their anniversary date instead of in monthly increments.
And um. Would there be any income tax impact to the employee or not?
Not on that one, because they're already gonna receive it, it's not, their their gross income is not going to increase. Because they're already receiving it only in monthly increments.
How about how much does that pay range?
I I don't know, uh, have to, we'd have to run some reports through to H R.
But it's but it's just, it's flush on the cost of county to.
I'm not in favor of the lump sum, only because I believe that that money would go further in the employee's pocket than in ours. For example, the fifty thousand dollar grant we got for wolf preventative measures. Has already accrued eight hundred dollars in interest because it was in our pocket and not the state's pocket and so. To me, it would be more prudent, I realize an employee suggests that and asks for it, but the money would go further in their pockets.
It's 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 uh i- if we did it continued monthly instead of lump sum. Um, when you talk about interest wise, everybody's anniversary date is across the board. So in potential that if you're talking about potential accrued interest that or interest that we would accrue in our, if we keep that money and. Give it out monthly, it might be a wash, because, you know. These few people would get it this month and these few people would get it two months or so. I I think the interest portion of it would be a little tough to determine whether or not we were. You know, losing money, so to speak, in interest, I I'm not, you know, so myself, I don't know, is it would really make a big difference there. My. When you start talking about, you know, whether or not a person has it in their monthly or wants the lump sum, that's the individual's. Responsibility and budgeting and finances, you know, whether they're gonna get it and spend it all at once or they're gonna keep it all, you know.
How how, what was the feedback yesterday on the discussion where most of the department heads in favor of it, was it half and half?
It wasn't really a lot, I I put it out there to them to to go talk to their staff. And and we'll come back at the next in the next uh staff meeting and see what the the overall consensus was. Uh, I don't see that one as being a real big deal, myself. The 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 cash, the vacation cash out could have some major implications. And then there was a third suggestion.
Before you put the third one, um. Are you possibly suggesting that the the employee would have the option whether to get get their longevity pay monthly or to get it lump sum or is it just? One policy for all?
I think we'd have to go one way or the other.
Okay.
Uh, the the accounting of it, otherwise it would be.
Just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Before we move on to that third one, what would you say the timeline is? If we were to try to come up with an idea that would work for a vacation cash out? Because it it would be awesome if we could make it work and not incur liability to have it in place this year for this holiday season, but I know we're already in November.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if we could make it work this year, because those dollars aren't budgeted. The only thing we we'd be relying on is any vacancies that we've had. Uh, in general fund, well, and it's not just general fund departments, it's all departments, so you you're almost, they're personal service dollars. And unless we've had a vacancy in that department that has left um um. Surplus funds. Then it's not budgeted for.
I I would rather do it right and and have us budget for it. Uh, and do it next year if we can do it, but.
I think we're gonna have to. I think we're gonna have to start budgeting for that anyway, if we're not already budgeting for it, because at any time, if someone. Who's been here for ten years, for example, leaves on December thirty-first, we we could potentially owe them three hundred and seventy-five. Hours and so if we're not accounting for that now, we need to, and if we haven't been, then I definitely think we shouldn't rush it. Rush this um decision for this year.
To be honest, I think the way the county has. For lack of a better term, floated that is that when you have a vacancy, there's usually um. A month of two months of vacancy before it gets filled, not always, it might be filled sooner in some cases. But that vacancy in that payroll line ends up funding that that payout. But I I agree, these are things that we kind of in the budget that we need to decide if we're gonna, if we're have a liability for it. And we really should have a line that says vacation in personal services, we should have a line for vacation payout. Um, you know, just like we mentioned the other day on on benefits. If some people don't get, don't take county benefits and we don't budget that position for basic benefits. Because we don't, you know, they're not gonna take it or they haven't signed up for it, so so for that year, we don't budget it for that line. We really should, because you never know when you're gonna get a vacancy. We really should have at least basic benefits budget against every.
Is that a change that happened last few years or has it always been that way?
That's the way I, it's the way I inherited it.
I thought quite a few years ago, it was budgeted anyway for the very reason you're you're bringing up and it provides cushion. A little bit, which we always need when things.
Yeah. Again, the first year I did the budget, I did it exactly status quo from what it was done the previous year, because it's hard to determine what's. What changes you can make, that's the practice that I inherited. And I've thought about it, I've thought about it every year, but you know, if this person leaves, he's not, he, she, they are not taking our insurance. But if they leave and the next person comes in and wants it.
I mean. I don't take the benefits, but I. You know, I don't think that I should. I mean, that's my choice, that's my choice, it's part of the job, offering, if you choose not to, fine, but we budget. Or I don't think those people who don't take it should get. You know, some monetary benefit for not taking it.
Well, that was kind of a, that was kind of another question is that for those that and some some employers do it, the state doesn't. We're not the state, we don't have the same.
We don't have the same resources.
But there are some employers that if you don't take their their employer offered insurance, then they give a. A stipend in place.
I mean, yeah, it'd be nice, but I just don't see that looking forward.
I I I agree, I'm not, yeah. So these are some things that as we get closer to budget cycle that we need to decide. As I start to prepare the proposed budget for next year, that that yes, I need to budget these into every line. But it's gonna cut, you know, especially in the general fund, it's gonna cut into other operational costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that third suggestion as well, I'm very in favor of us exploring how to implement a draw system. In general, I think it's pretty common practice in industry to be able to take draws against what you're earning and I think. The question was if we could do bi-monthly pay, which would in theory double the payroll man-hours. But I think if we just had a once a month draw that a person could elect to take. Then all of that workers' comp and taxes and and hours signed off on, just be done at the end of the month, just like it is now. You just drag subtract the draw there to be.
Let's look into that.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, in in the conversation, it it's not a full-blown payroll cycle. That has to have all the benefits and withholdings and everything. Uh, figured into it, it's just a, a, it's like a allotment, so to speak, but then it comes off of your. Or it's part of your gross monthly income. Those were the three.
Can I give you guys just a little perspective, I I stuck around and stood through this, so just from a business standpoint. And this is ultimately a county decision, so just take what I'm saying for fuel for thought, but I have twenty-two employees. I work for a company that has six hundred and ten employees. And E T O is not designed as a cash out, or do you call it personal time off or vacation? The intention of that money is to take time away from work, so you remain a fresh and active employee. And so there's no state law that says that you have to pay that out, um, we no longer pay out our insurance. Or our 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 benefit at the end of termination, so if someone puts in their two weeks and they have. You know, eight hours of time, then they only work accordingly and their last two days are paid out as their as their time off. So if you put in your two weeks notice, when you have two weeks of paid time off, then tomorrow is your last day. That that employee is no longer productive after they have. Decided that that they're no longer going to work for you, so there's no reason to extend that because the efficiency of that employee is next to nothing. But. And this has been conversation from my company, but when you design a policy in which people just take that money as cash. Then they're gonna be taking the same amount of time off for their doctor's appointments and all their things, but it's no longer gonna be paid time off. You're just gonna lose that employee. And so, once you go down that path, that there would never be an attorney back from them. Um, and so that's just, as a company with six hundred and ten employees, um, you know. If if someone doesn't think they make enough money, the idea is not to cash out your P T O, is to better yourself and move up within your company or find a new job. And so those are important things, I think, from a strictly business standpoint that you need. And, you know, took into consideration, although the county is a government, a lot of what they do operates as a business. And so I I think that that, you know, if if I were in your guys' seat, it would be pretty easy no for me. Because paid time off is designed for you to have time away from work, so you remain a a active, engaged, um, and efficient employee.
The best uh private sector, I've had a lot of private sector jobs, which I really liked, because they. Make different decisions than government makes and um, there was a huge company, uh, and they. I mean, you had the vacation and then it was, you know, just a little bit you could carry over, not much at all. And they had unlimited sick leave. And nobody abused it, it was amazing, if your kid is sick, you know, we want you to home that kid and it actually. Uh, it didn't backfire, people weren't abusing it, I was amazed, uh, because again, it was a very large company, very professional, but still. Um. I've never been anywhere else where that was the policy and and you think people are gonna take advantage and say they're sick and just stay at home. No, people didn't, because they appreciated the fact that that they didn't have to bring a doctor's note or whatever, you know. You're sick, stay home, if you're getting sick, stay home, and if your kid is sick, stay home and come back as soon as you can. In a healthy state, that you're not gonna get anyone else sick.
Yeah, and and stopping sounds after five years of tenure, you you accrue and earn. Yeah, and and stop and sounds after five years of tenure, you you accrue and earn four weeks of paid time off a year. Which is a lot, but we've really found that that. Especially in a demanding job like we have, like, it really gives those people the time away that they stay engaged, active and. And invested in the company, so.
Do you combine your your like vacation with yours?
No, we also provide forty hours a year of just sick time. And and you can use your sick time or your PTO as you want. Um, there's no payout on the sick time, the sick time is just your sick time, you can use it if you're sick. If you only approve forty hours, if you use eight, you get back to forty, that's all you ever get, so there's no carryover. But but you know, your your paid time off, it it accrues and you cap out at a maximum, you know. And so when you reach those maxims, the idea is that you've you've not had any time off. So take four or five days off, take a long weekend off, go away, be refreshed, come back and be a good employee.
We we somewhat during our last uh bargaining unit negotiations had that same conversation. That the time off is intended for that revitalization. Um, so I I uh. I I I agree with that, that that you know, that's not the intent, just to bank up a savings account there. Uh, I understand the the.
It would be a signature shift.
Yeah.
I I find employees that have had a a week off or even, you know, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They come back more active and more engaged and and are more productive than the guy that never takes any of them off and just grinds it out.
I don't think we, I don't think we can take action.
No, no.
Because of some of the other budgetary things, and I think some things have been brought up that we're gonna need to discuss during the next budget cycle. I thought my mud po was looking real clear until he came along. Switched up, but those are, those are good phones.
The other deal, uh, as you talked about the site, then just just some insight, you know, this perspective, but. We have found within our company and and our insurance that we actually gain money by paying people a stipend. Insurance. Um, so if you were really run the numbers and look and say your husband has insurance that it could cover you. Um, instead of taking accounting, it's more beneficial to the employee to get paid that stipend. And and be on their on their spouses, say, for example, or maybe it's a parent if they're, you know. Under twenty six, but we pay a stipend and financially actually makes more sense for us to pay the stipend. And make that available, because it incentivizes that employee to maybe be on another insurance program instead of just saying. Uh, here's your insurance, I'll just get on, you know, and that's a, that's a hard financial number to probably drill down on. But it's just perspective that we have found that cost effective.
So. It um, when Commissioner Frank asked this to be added today, I think purely as the special, because. Like I said, we still have to hear, I still have to hear back from the department heads as to kind of what their staff and what they're thinking about. Um, but it was also good for us to be on the same page, so that when they do come back, we've already kind of somewhat started the conversation. I I I think, you know, well, not think, but ultimately it is gonna be our decision for both both budgetary. And operational, whether we're gonna entertain these these suggestions or not. Um. Yeah. So, moving on correspondence, any correspondence of note? Um, scheduling, meeting schedules. Thank you, Frank, it it helps, it helps to hear the perspective of. I mean, we're a government, we have to do some things specific ways, but it's good to hear the perspective from from private industry.
Yeah, yeah, and county has a lot of employees that do a lot of important jobs and the opportunity is so important, especially within our rural areas, you know. So, it's something really to factor.
I sat on another board, we had the same thing. For for the insurance side of things, be more times than others, better to incentivize them to stay with their spouses.
Hey, Merle, it's good to see you.
See him early in the life.
I I found here recently, especially with. With um, just labor and kids and families that flexible work scheduled at less money. Was a lot of times more beneficial to an employee than just the high paying job.
My old goes so far.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Um. Meetings, let me see, um. Um, so I went to the. The Commission on Transportation Joint Act meeting. Last week. Um, and it was really, I I'm torn on going to that meeting. Um. I I go because I'm afraid if we don't go, then they, you're not here.
Did they let you zoom in? Um, because I know when you've had C Act meetings, the uh. Commissioners had zoomed in, uh, one of the meetings in the basement that I attended. So I wondered if that's, I think you have to contact them each time ahead of time to get the permission.
They may have had, I don't think there was anybody on, I mean, they had it up on the screen, but I don't think there was anybody that it was zoomed in. Um. I don't know, but anyway, I I, to be honest with you, don't feel like there was. Any main major benefit to going, other than just being there and being present and being part of the. Process to some degree, I mean, I did express our concerns in Eastern Oregon as far as operations and safety of of our highways. And um, you know, with the new budget, if it's passed by the governor or signed by the governor, which it will be, it's just a political game right now. But um, you know, once that's passed or signed and passed, then the funding is there. If they do a a referendum to the voters, who knows what the future of it will be then, and where they'll start, have to start all over again. But um. Our our maintenance this winter for snow removal and other things shouldn't be an issue as. As long as those funds are there. I did, like I said, express our concern that, you know, when highway I eighty four gets closed down. And then that traffic ends up getting diverted through Burns and and John Day and whatnot, because the truckers and people are looking for alternative routes. Um, I expressed concern that that even even if and when. Or when the the big cascade event ever takes place. Um. That our highways are gonna be the evacuation, the ingress and egress routes. For for that event on the west side, traffic's gonna be going westbound to to respond to it, and traffic's gonna be going eastbound to get away from it. So, so that increases the. The need for maintenance and stability on our on our highways.
Did you say that they said at that meeting that our snow removal is not gonna be affected this year?
Um, they didn't say, as I recall specifically, but they're fully funded, so it should be as normal.
At the last Lepsi meeting that we had, our Burns and Jantura district manager came. To let us know what the winter was gonna look like, they're not gonna be plowing at night at all on any of the highways. They're not gonna be able to authorize any overtime, and there are a couple of personnel, a couple of staff members now.
When was that, was that before the passage of the transportation bill?
Like two weeks ago, probably. And showed us.
Actually, just in a full funding.
I, that's what I was told it was a full funding.
It's not, they wanted six hundred and fifty nine freedom.
No, it was kind of the theme of that Lepsin meeting, because it is an emergency and a public safety concern. Because if you run off the road between Bend and Boise at nine o'clock at night, you're gonna be stuck there till the next morning.
I'll I'll have to get with with Region Five people and find out then, because it was my understanding that they got. They got everything they wanted, which was a full funding package.
That'd be good if you can touch base.
I don't.
With Sean or whoever.
And then you also have to be hurried that that, if that package is gonna be put out to the public all.
Yeah, that's the politics side of it is.
Right, that pack if, after she signs it, they'll have, what, sixty days maybe to get those signatures? To get those signatures, that money is done. It cannot be expended.
I think our emergency management department was actually working on something for the newspaper, just so people could be aware of how they may be affected this winter. For travel because of what the. I I guess it's the district manager informed us of, so.
We'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, we have a, so kind of leading up to that, the reason I went into that is because it leads into tomorrow, had there's a, I'm not going to it, I'm gonna zoom in. But there's a a joint meeting between the C Act, the Southeast area, and the N Act, the Northeast area tomorrow. It's up in Baker, and again. I think Baker's gonna uh, gonna host it, so I didn't need to be there in person as the co-chair, so I'm gonna zoom in on.
They should definitely zoom capacity every time for those meetings.
Or meeting at the O Tech building. So.
Yeah, Baker.
I plan.
Are you gonna go up to it?
Yeah.
Not bad.
I've got my own opportunity to shop for the meeting.
I told, I I told the Region Five management that I would be there via Zoom, I'm not gonna drive up for it.
Yeah, and then six hours of driving for you is crazy. They're expensive.
As a reminder, the petition is only gonna be dealing with four elements out of the whole thing, so it's not gonna take every element off of. That bill that the governor would sign. Um, what I am really concerned about is I was talking to a business owner yesterday that always has two employees. Going, and she said, I just can't afford the the double payroll tax. She said, I don't know what I'm gonna do, but.
Oh, yeah. Which. The only silver lining to that one is it sunsets in twenty seven, twenty eight? Something like that, that additional payroll tax has a sunset to it.
Well, how do they make it to there? How how would the businesses make?
Oh, yeah, I I agree, I'm just saying, if if there's any, it's not a permanent thing, but it does have a sunset on it, so. Um, we have uh, the AOC special meeting on Friday, ten o'clock.
Yes, plus I haven't heard any changes to that.
I have a meeting with Cemetery Care, I'm just kind of letting you know what's coming up for me, but I have a meeting with Cemetery Care Friday afternoon. Um, kind of discuss this, the CFAA a little bit, where they're at. Um. We have county court meeting, well, it's not county court meeting, it's just the county court listening session, whatever, at the Diamond School. As part of their, they they graciously put us on their agenda, so give us some time, basically. At the Diamond School to address, just to address the public there, our constituents in that area.
On Monday at four.
And Monday at four, so um.
I'd appreciate. All of King's stage, my car, wherever, just so we save a little gas and. I don't like night driving as much as we used to, so it'll be dark when we come home.
The eleventh is a holiday? Veterans Day?
Has the uh. Operation Green Light lights been put up this year?
Um, they're up all the time, he just programs it to different colors.
He's not here right now, right?
No.
Though it has been programmed to be at night at green, I I'm not.
I will check, I'm I'm.
This is the week it's supposed to be Operation Green Light.
Is it all week or?
Yeah, so I think it's like the week before they start it through.
Okay, I'll I'll reach out to him and see if he got a.
I think he's not gonna be back till the tenth, which is.
I don't know for sure yet. So, um.
Um, excuse me, any word from our CDSO, um, Brian Needham on getting on? Okay.
And then the week of the seventeenth, we've got AOC conference and the next county court session on the twenty fourth. So like that.
I think you mentioned all three of them, um. So, have any scheduling events to mention?
Does anyone have an O Web meeting tomorrow on their calendar?
I I wrote it down, it's a Zoom meeting, and I think it has to, I'm I'm not sure if it has to do more with their grants. And stuff, I I wrote it down, I have Brendan Persinger from AOC as the email person who sent it out.
Is it at eleven?
Yes.
It's a meeting, basically the conversation that Harney County has had with O Web has spurred them to have conversations with all the counties through AOC. I just couldn't remember what it was, sometimes I put stuff on my calendar in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Okay.
Uh, there's a CCP meeting on December twelfth.
That's the refuge?
Yep.
I thought that was canceled.
Ah, see, that's what I'm talking about, it might have been. I'll have to, I'll double check here in a minute, so I think it, well.
And would the camp be mainly because of government shutdown or for for any other reasons?
No.
I mean, these are more check-in meetings, right, they're not. Driving, I had the CCP, my impression was they they wanna keep conversation going, but it's not. Really on the track for accomplishment of certain.
There, it really shouldn't be called CCP meeting anymore, probably, because they're doing a complete pivot, because their regional leadership. Said you don't need to focus your resources on redoing your plan, because they're a couple of years premature. They are focusing on trying to implement some projects. Um, like grazing, for example, some of their grazing projects with virtual collars, they wanna implement those to try to control some of their invasive species. And so they're trying to keep, keep those conversations going, and they are also, for what it's worth. Striving to figure out how to get more private landowner engagement, so that it's not just an agency. On form informational. That's uh.
So you had the CCP meeting for the twelfth, I had it for the sixth, and it was canceled on the sixth.
Yeah.
The sixth of November?
Yeah, the sixth one was canceled and I didn't get a notice of the next one.
I didn't even, I might have put it in the wrong spot, but you mean almost.
For the twelfth.
You can almost guarantee we're not gonna have CCP meeting on the twelfth, because they're not, is the shutdown gonna be over by then? Even if they are, they're not gonna have that meeting. I'll have to look back through my emails to see if I just messed up the date, that's all I.
Yes, there is a hub board meeting on the twelfth.
Okay.
General deliberation, um. Just as an update, you're all, you're all aware, but um. The juvenile department director uh position is vacant due to a resignation. And um, I've been assisting the. Juvenile counselor uh in covering call and whatnot, and problem solving and whatnot. Um, we had to bulletin bulletin for our policy bulletin eternally. Uh, for a week, so Friday it'll go out external. And uh, we start to look for applications, try to. Bulletin it as broad as we can. The juvenile department directors association, trying to get them to put it on their site and distribute it to directors and. Maybe through OYA, whoever. Who might be able to get it as broadly as possible.
Locally, how does the, how does it get bulletin here to the community?
Um, social media. It goes to the local employment office, you know, they'll have it there, um. We don't normally put in the newspaper, um, this position, we really need to get it filled, so maybe we'll put something in the newspaper.
Things I wouldn't know, but do we have a place on our county website for job, job openings and so it'd be bulletin there too?
Yeah, and I also forward them to the chamber in the afternoon.
Okay, but that sounds pretty good.
I'm real concerned about that department, and I hope that we can work with the schools and maybe some of our neighboring counties to make sure. There's not a lapse in those kind of specialty services for the youth. I'm sure that's being done, but a few counties have kind of reached out and said, if you guys need help, so.
So I've made contact with uh Mount Here County. I've made contact with Grant County. Uh, Baker County. And I called, left a message message at Wasco County, haven't heard back from those, um. But just, just to to line up some of that technical support assistance, you know, like, so we don't miss something that we're supposed to do in reporting, or if we have a. Have a case and we're not quite sure how to how to pursue it or whatever, that we have somebody to call and get. Other input from. Um. I was so, also, I was just gonna mention. Don't remember now. We um, did reach out to the budget board members and the elected officials committee members. And um, the elected officials, we can, we can bulletin still and see, but the the existing uh elected officials. Members were interested in serving again.
And how many are there?
Three. We have three to five or three up to seven?
It's however many.
Not on the elected officials one.
I think it's three to five, but I could be wrong, and that's fine, as long as no one drops out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm glad to hear that we usually don't have repeaters, so it's nice to have.
The budget board one is equal number of civilian representatives. The budget board one is equal number of civilian representatives to the.
So we have to bulletin that one.
We do have a vacancy.
Yes.
Um, individual has expressed interest to be reappointed.
Oh.
Uh, but I, you know, again, I think, I think, you know, we put it out there and see what, see what interest there is. And then as a body, we could decide who to select.
Okay, I didn't know, I can't remember, is there a maximum number of terms, budget board members, okay?
Yeah, nothing, nothing that I'm aware of as far as the number of terms that they can fill, it's just three-year terms.
Okay.
So we have started that, though, kind of just trying to get ahead of it a little bit.
I feel like having some of these discussions that have budget impacts. The way we're doing now, starting earlier, you know, as we have, or it's gonna make it easier um for you as you're putting it together. Because you'll have. You know, the input from us and uh. People will have time to research budget impacts for some of the suggestions to make sure that we're not naively. Doing something that we can't continue.
The process that the that I've used, we used last year. Wherein the county court heard the proposals. And then approved or declined, you know, whether it was step increases or purchases, you know, capital improvement vehicles, whatever. By the court hearing those proposals and making a decision before the proposed budget was actually. Uh, submitted or or put out. Helps in knowing the direction to go and producing that document. Um, I mean, it, I can go to the moon as the budget officer and give a proposed budget that has everything in it. And then we can whittle it away after that, or we can decide as a body what direction we want to go on things, and then that affects the proposed budget.
But um hopefully, I know it's still ongoing, but once the um wage scale study is done. And any policy, county policies we need to do to um, you know, make them policy on things. Should help a lot with what some of the department heads ask for, right? And and I'm looking forward to that day, I know there'll always occasionally be an issue, but um, most places. It's it's not been the way, you know, the angst and the dialogue and stuff. You know, we're trying to get it to where it's objective.
It's a standardization, it's an objective standardization of position classification and and what. What pays grade or, yeah, what pay grade they fit into, so that, so that you know that in position X, you're a grade. Whatever, and this is your earnings potential in that grade.
And I know that um it must be very. Complicated and that you do a good job, but I know that things can be missed. And I remember last time when we we were telling everyone that they were going to um. Get a cost of living, and then we had to change that because of stuff that hadn't populated. Right?
Well, the last, the last budget cycle, I tried to go as high as I possibly could with a cost of living for everybody.
Right.
I felt it was better to try and spread it out across the board amongst everybody.
Right.
Versus having a two percent cost of living and then doing step increases for some employees, whether they were about due for it or not. But then those employees actually end up with about a five percent increase because of their step and their cola. So so last time around, I tried to go as high as I could with a cola with no step increases. Well, I would, yeah, because I went to four percent.
Yeah, so so that's all I'm saying is, is it's how we learn.
You know, what we can afford and what we can't afford.
Yeah.
I I started out with four percent last time and we plugged those numbers in and we couldn't afford it, so I had to back off to three percent.
Correct, correct.
This this time around, I'm preliminarily looking at two percent with step increases for those employees that are.
Want to give you a time check on my, I'm gonna be not cut you off.
Uh, oh, so the other thing I remember was, uh, the employee handbook, I just finished my review of it. As soon as HR has those those edits done, then it'll come to both of you for your review. And that's some of the stuff in there that we've talked about, like with pay and vacation and whatnot, you might think about and look at our current policy is versus. Versus the thing we might want to change. So that's it, that's all I have.
I don't, I, really, the main thing is that I've been um holding these. Economic development conversations around certain topics, and I've held two out of the four. Uh, conversational meetings that I've convened and they're going well, um, there'll be a lot for me to debrief you on. Um, once they're complete and it'll just uh help, I think, with what we try to figure out. Our role in economic development can be for the good of the community, I've been pleased that the um, the people who come. Write information, some of which, you know, is different than what my understanding was or other people's, and then it um. It just seems to flow well and that people, you know, kind of brief us or share a few ideas, but. Um, nothing specific to report out right now, just I've um, the. So the first one was on agriculture and industry, the second one was on on small business tourism and Main Street. And the next one will be next Wednesday and it's at, it's um on housing and infrastructure. And so I think that one's, I'm gonna really try to have more of an outline for the things to touch on, because there's a lot that can be touched on. For that, uh, including a little bit of flood irrigation mitigation, excuse me, um, you know, but. It, the airport, just things like that, that are all part of our infrastructure, you know, dealing with the co-ops, et cetera, and then on housing. Um, the housing developers are intending to be there and. Um, I think Mick Green is gonna also be there, but we also are some of our contractors in the area. Um, and just, it'll be an interesting mix. So that's all I have.
All right, we already talked about O dot level of service, I am exploring. And getting some help on potentially drafting a letter. Asking for accountability and a third-party review of some of the processes that W R D has undertaken in the last year or two. Because there are some pretty clear instances where they're conflating science with policy, for example. In the first rack meeting when they said the USGS study shows that it's one.
Basin.
Reservoir, and that's not what the science said at all, that's a policy statement, and so. We're exploring the possibility of. Of getting a third party, like one of the universities, to take a look and make sure that any of the rules are. The say they're based on science are not making policy assumptions. At the groundwater advisory committee, maybe last week or two weeks ago, I found it very concerning that the director said. There's not a rush to get this rule passed, because some people are asking, we need more times, you know, slow down, let us come up with a different amendment. But there's not a rush, because there's going to be seven or eight years worth of litigation, and I was borderline offended by that, because right now, the economic uncertainty for our community. Um, is is unacceptable, and another seven or eight years of not addressing our groundwater problems isn't gonna do it any good either with a declining water table. And so that attitude that there's gonna be seven or eight years of litigation, so it's no rush, it's very trouble to.
Well, I don't mind them saying it doesn't have to be December, but by March, we're gonna do it or something, but and let's. Let's redo these portions that apparently come to our attention, that we're not done properly or something. You know, I don't know what the answer is, I was wondering. It's going, just in the in the void until December, the December meeting.
Yeah.
That I'm sure there's a lot of things going on that that aren't for public consumption and that I'm not aware of, but uh. I, anytime a process. Um, violates integrity, it bothers me, it's wrong. And. When a poli- when a policy is put off as um more than policy, but science, that's wrong. And it takes, it takes everything, we we need to be honest, government needs to be honest, agencies need to be honest. Yes, you have, you might be done for it to go this way, but you're gonna use the facts. So, yes, I I made the same comment about that stuff in my own comments too, once I became aware, but that, that was a big. Foundation that they used as they moved forward on the rulemaking.
It it put us in a worse situation when by twenty sixteen, our county said, there's a problem and it needs to be addressed, and for the next. Eight years, they continued to give out permits and allow transfers into other subareas, and to think that. We'll go another seven or eight years without any kind of reining in is is not good. Um, we need to finish the MOU with the Fair Board, I've. I completely forgot about that, and I think we've done most of the groundwork, but I didn't know where we were at, and. We kind of got a capital improvements update, but one thing I thought was noteworthy, when they were able to get a carnival in last minute. I think we had talked a little bit about the fact that for the inflatables like we've had previously, the expense was roughly twenty seven thousand. The carnival was, had to walk away with sixty thousand dollars, which means if they didn't make sixty thousand dollars in ticket sales. We would have to pay the difference, and so we expected it would probably be about a wash with what we've been paying for inflatables. And they were so close to that sixty thousand dollar mark that the company didn't charge, charge them zero dollars. No, we didn't quite get there, but I mean, it was, apparently it was really qualitative.
I was very pleased, and and if it's known farther ahead of time, there'll be a carnival and even more of the families that mainly go there for the carnival.
So they saved twenty seven thousand.
They saved twenty seven thousand dollars, which is good.
Very good.
In the last minutes, we had had some conversation about uncertainty, if SRS isn't reauthorized. If Pilt was gonna cover that difference, and I didn't know if he'd had a chance to listen.
So I I I did get some more information back from A AOC on that, they gave me the the. There's two formulas, basically to cut to the point, there's a, there's a formula A and a formula B. And and they take into consideration different things on how, what our pill payment's gonna be.
And are those opt, are those two different formulas are and are option?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
But that's one of my questions is how to, how to, who determines which formula we're gonna use, I don't know yet. So anyway, I got a whole bunch of information, I did some online research, and I have it all clipped together in there that I need to read. I think right now, the way it looks right now is yes, in one formula, if you don't get. So let's say for, let's say for this year, for twenty uh fiscal year twenty six, we're in right now, right? So our Pilt payment would come in, uh, normally comes in, I think, in June, right before, right before budget is finalized. Uh, so, so when we get our June Pilt payment. Any payments that we had from fiscal year twenty five, because it's federal government, and that includes refuge, um. Fees, Ta- Taylor Grazing Act, uh, SRS, um. And there's a couple others, but anyway, if we get any of those, those funds, they come, they would come out of the Pilt in one formula type. I believe the formula that we're under doesn't do that, so it's, so we're gonna get the same amount of Pilt.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, I was.
Right, right now, I still, I still gotta review it and do some more clarification, but I think that's where we're at. Is that the formula that was used for our Pilt does not take into consideration past federal payments. Um, one thing I did notice, though, from the last Pilt worksheet. They put our population as seven thousand for Harney County, whereas the census were at seventy five and some change. I don't know yet, I'm gonna run those numbers, I don't know if that extra five hundred people has a big impact on the, on the calculation, but I'm working on it. I'm looking at it.
Good.
I'm I'm like, whatever we get, I mean, I guess if you, if you were to take what, our Pilt was one point four million. Um. One four, just roughly right off the top, if you're gonna divide that by, by. Seven thousand people. That's two hundred dollars a person. If there's another, another five hundred people, and and it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit different, this is real rough, but um. At two hundred times another five hundred people, that's another hundred thousand dollars. If if, if it works that way and just preliminarily, I'll take another hundred thousand dollars.
Heck, yeah, we need it.
Okay, thanks for that.
Can I mention something about integrity of of water resources, I just learned this morning, in fact, that's where I was when I should have been here. Is that uh, okay, I live in Virginia Valley, and we have been told all through this five twelve process that we were excluded. That where the cutoff was, was one property owner before me, okay? So I'm I'm told now that in December, they're gonna change that. And that Virginia Valley all the way down through Treetide, you know, the south. It's gonna be included, I think that's totally unfair, I I went to a lot of the meetings, but my neighbors didn't.
Just because Patty has take off at noon, do you have a couple minutes to stick around afternoon to discuss that, because that's real concerning.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's fair.
Here, what else you have?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, both advisory committee met last night, they set up their expectations in the process that they'll go through, so that people can apply. For grant funding, which we procured um for. Non-lethal preventative techniques, which could include guard dogs. Um, drones, extra range riders, we have fifty thousand dollars. Also, the direct loss application, if someone had a verified depredation, which I know of at least one in the county, and that will actually be paid next year. But the non-lethal preventative things will be paid out of this money we have, I'm gonna call on Holly to help me post this stuff, we're gonna advertise on the radio and newspaper. So that we can engage more people, um, to get help with the wolf problems, and then one other thing while Patty's packing up. I'm just gonna throw out there, so if you hear about me snooping around about this, you don't think I'm going crazy. Gillon County is rich, one of the things they are working on is uh. Basically a biomass plant that's gonna use methane off their landfill to produce electricity, and so I started looking into. What Harney County could do, because we have forest material that needs removed from the, from the forest, and a lot of it's not merchantable timber, and we don't have a sawmill. They have a lot of juniper encroachment, that there used to be federal funding projects for that. And I think they would improve the security and the resilience and infrastructure, and the stuff that I looked at for Harney County become energy. Self-sufficient, it would create thirty to fifty jobs in a biomass plant similar to some others in the state. Plus probably another thirty jobs hauling material, and so I've reached out to Andrea Latham, who worked on. Hey, she's term biomass, because this one was kind of a, kind of a failure, and it's just in the last year or two that that committee. Has gotten it straightened out, so I don't want to scare people out, but she helped with that. And we need to talk to utilities, because potentially they'd want to be partners, I know when this came up in the nineties, they didn't want to be required to buy power. But if they were partners and owned the power and could offer it to their cooperative members for cheaper. It would create a lot of jobs, because there's a lot of money out there for green energy and renewable energy, economic development, so. It's, this is just uh like a wisp of an idea, but I just.
I like that, I like.
Throwing it out there.
Uh, good. Excuse me, y'all.
It, it's a lot of potential there.
It would be a multimillion dollar project, and I just.
Um.
Does it have to be, does it have to be a government entity or kind of private entity? Or a public-private partnership?
I I don't know, that's what we need to figure out, if a big investor wanted to do it, that'd be cool, but if it was uh. A partnership between, say, the co-op utilities and the county. If if that, if there were an incentive in doing it that way, and it wasn't a liability for us.
Oh, we're, we're not gonna reconvene, are we, at once?
I don't have anything else, and, and we're just, this is just side talk really.
Yeah.
Can I ask Rob about that, does the MOU have a space for that maintenance man? We were talking about yesterday.
It it doesn't, but that's like mentioned about putting that in there.
But I'm on a ride right now, I told.
Talk again, but where did you hear that they were gonna change that boundary? Because there was talk of them changing within the critical groundwater area, they were gonna change the boundary. And not down into the.
Oh, that's what I mentioned the other day, but yeah, because we're in the process of doing that. Work out in the room with the fair, the chair, share that resource.
That'll, that'll be in the December, that would be cool. It's a go in with USGS and with O S U. That USGS before cut it off, because it was in, I guess, on the peaks or something, and. Um, my, my area was handled by Mount Here County.
Let me interrupt you just for just a second, um, are you guys gonna continue this afterwards, or you want it on the record?
Oh, it does, I don't care either way.
So, so being no further business, Harney County Court will stand adjourned at. Eleven fifty eight, yeah, record, sorry, thank you.
That's what he was saying, is that, um. That we weren't listed in the uh basin plan, because.